The meeting for March 12th, the council meeting is called to order at 8:01. The first thing on the agenda is the invocation on Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Kadim, could you lead us in the invocation?
Yes, sir. Almighty God, please bless and keep us all safe. Have mercy on those who are suffering throughout our land. Also have mercy on the shootings that took place in the schools in Texas. Please keep us safe, keep us from harm, bless the town of Stratford, and let us do good and wholesome work. Thank you. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Kadim. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting on February 13th?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Kadim, motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Dantow. Is there any discussion or any information? Any, if not, there's no comments, we'll call this to a vote. All in favors?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten zero with the chair voting with the majority. There... Yes?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and add the ordinance of programming the CIP capital improvement program for the fiscal year of 2018 to 2019 to tonight's agenda.
There's a motion to suspend the rules for Mr. Pia. Is there a second?
So moved. Dave Harden.
Mr. Harden, seconded it. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Yes. When you break down the CIP, you want to move it to tonight. You want to add it to it, right?
I would, I would just like to add it to the agenda so we can send it to ordinance. Correct.
Okay. Don't we already have that up here on, I think it's 12, we have the amount of the ordinance will be added in, correct?
If you're, which section are you referring to, Mr. Kadim?
It's right here, 7.3. An ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the town of Stratford for the fiscal year.
Yep, so that's, I believe...
So we'll be doing it at 07.3.
That's the budget.
This is actually a motion, Mr. Kadim, for something different. The item seven that you're referring to, 7.3, is the annual operating budget for one year for the town of Stratford, as well as the mill rate ordinance. This is what was formerly known as the Capital Improvement and Capital Equipment Program. This is basically the bonding package that's approved every year for the town for bonded items. There's two ordinances that appear on the agenda. One talks about short-term, the other is long-term bonding and borrowing. It's a separate ordinance, it's not the budget ordinance.
Thank you. In terms of the fact that we just got the package for the budget ordinance, you putting it on here to move it somewhere, or you trying to prove it without even looking?
No, no. The motion, the motion is just, it's just going on the agenda and it goes to ordinance committee. An ordinance committee has a public hearing, then it comes back to this body, and you vote on it at the same time you vote on the budget.
Thank you very much. Thank you for clarification.
Any further discussion on this? If not, call it to a vote. All in favor of adding this to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten zero. Now there, Mr. Pia, do you want to deal with this now?
Can I refer to the town attorneys as to when we should...
You know, I would suggest you do it as item 7.8 and 7.9 on the agenda. That would logically fall at that point.
Thank you.
And I'll remind you when you get there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We'll move it to 7.8, okay. Going forward, ceremonial presentation awards, there's none. Now we're going to go to three, 3.1, received from the planning division. Resolution of supporting of funding. Is there a motion? There's no motion?
No, on this item, you could just note that you've received a resolution from the planning commission regarding the town's plan of conservation and development, and that that resolution from the commission is attached to the agenda. It does not require any further action by the council at this time.
Okay. No further action, let's go to the mayor's report. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, you've received the fiscal year 1819 budget. You've received that in addition to the capital improvement plan. And tonight, this is just for presentation as it's required by the charter to be delivered to you by March 12th. And in the process of completing this and presenting this document, we've had many, many meetings, numerous with the agencies, departments, involving extensive reviews of the operating budget to produce a town budget that's aimed at maximizing efficiencies, eliminating that which is unnecessary, and providing a town government which is lean. Economic development and redevelopment initiatives that we are supporting and have expanded to yield 2.02 percent in growth of the town's grand list. I'm pleased to report that this budget reduces the mill rate to 39.9, a .17 reduction over the current year, and produces a modest tax decrease for the town's taxpayers. I'm looking forward to the opportunity of working with you all and working with the employees to present this budget to you in detail, as well as to present it to the taxpayers. And I'm available to you at all times to help with our work in moving forward with this, completing a budget in advance of the May 12th date. Recently, we've had several storms and power outages, and last week was a significant nor easter, and I guess we're going to have one tonight or tomorrow. The storm, the past one, had heavy wet snow. It downed many tree limbs, tangled power lines, presenting a number of challenges for our public works and public safety departments. Due to the severity of the storm, I opened the town's emergency operations center, and as a result of the storm, over 400 residents experienced loss of electrical service. I worked with United Illuminating and Concert, offering all of the town's disposal to facilitate the restoration as quickly as possible, and I'd like to commend our public works department, our public safety department, and all of our personnel who worked so well in this challenging event. As another storm is expected this evening, I want you to be advised that we have a parking ban in place. Public Works will be reporting shortly this evening, and if the emergency operations center is required to be open, I will do so at a later time. We had some events at Town Hall on the 28th from 5:00 to 7:00. I had the first of an ongoing series of open meetings, and residents came to speak with me one-on-one of issues interested of them and concerning them. At the event, there were about 25 residents who came and talked about a variety of subjects for several hours. In addition, I've held a number of appointments with residents who were unable to make the event, and I'm continuing to meet with many residents to schedule meetings. We have had between 25 and 30 meetings to date. If you're available at Town Hall and you'd like to come see me, and I'm available to meet with you, I'm happy to do so without an appointment. Otherwise, please schedule an appointment to see me. We had a Girl Scouts visiting at Town Hall, Troop 37237, on February 20th. It was great to talk to these young ladies, and they were in the pursuit of their government badges. They had several questions that were very interesting, makes you ponder about life and public service. Black History Month celebration, we happened at the Baldwin Center. The Stratford, the Stratford Teen Library Black History Celebration was a contest for essays and artwork and poems, and the students really provided some wonderful, wonderful reflections on how important our black history is to us. Read Across America Day was also celebrated this month. I was lucky enough to participate at two schools, Will Coxon at Mrs. Galasso's 3rd grade, and, I'm sorry, Ms. Swanson's 6th grade, and Mrs. Galasso's 3rd grade at Chapel. And again, the questions that the students had were heartwarming as well as very intriguing. And then I'd like, as a final conclusion, to invite you to the St. Patrick's Day festivities at Town Hall, which will begin on Friday at 9:00 on the steps of Town Hall. We have a ceremony that includes raising the Irish flag, naming the Irish mayor for the day, and it will be followed by the much anticipated Irish Soda Bread Competition, which will take place in room 213 of Town Hall. The competition is open to all residents, and I guess there's qualifications and rules to this, to submit an entry for consideration. Bring your Irish soda bread to room 213 at 8:30 in the morning. So, that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Now we're on to the ordinance committee. I'd like to refer to the town attorneys before we get going. On the 4.21 ordinance, was that resolved? Mr.?
It is, Mr. Chairman. On this item, we are recommending, last month, as you know, you had an item on the agenda regarding this. It was a basic resolution that was referred. It was a resolution that funding for the Community and Economic Development Administrator be approved. It was referred to ordinance committee. Ordinance committee came back with an actual ordinance, creating the position of economic and community development coordinator. In an abundance of caution, we recommend that this item, again, be referred to ordinance committee because two readings are required, and it is required to go to ordinance. What was sent to ordinance committee was not actually an ordinance, but a resolution by this body. So, to be, again, in an abundance of caution, we recommend that this is now an ordinance, and because it's an ordinance, this should be referred to ordinance committee as its first reading dispensed with at the same time. It'll be back on the agenda next month for the second reading, having come from ordinance as an ordinance, and you vote on it at that time.
So, having heard all that, can, can I get a motion to send this back to ordinance for a second reading?
So moved. So moved.
I'm sorry, Mr. Poissons?
Mr. Chairman, the motion, first reading of this item be dispensed with, as members of the council have copies, and this be adopted as the first reading and referred to ordinance for a public hearing.
So, motion by Mr. Poissons, seconded by Mr. Pia. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, sir.
Yes?
This position is created for what reason, again? Because we already have economic development there, and the salary is not really being stated yet, and the duties are not really there either?
There'll be, that's why it's going back to ordinance for those items.
Okay, I understand that. I'm just asking why it was created to begin with.
Basically, I don't know if I should answer, but, go ahead, Mr. Pia.
Just from my recollection, from my recollection from the past ordinance meeting, as we could probably pull from the minutes, there was a salary range of approximately 20,000 to 30,000 that was discussed and put in the ordinance minutes. And I believe, and maybe the economic development department or the mayor's office can clarify as a, some type of assistant-type role, but we discussed that at the past ordinance meeting.
Is that satisfying, Mr. Kadim?
Well, I guess, like you said, we can discuss it, but I definitely know what the duties are of that position, and what the requirements are. Is schooling involved? A lot goes on with creating a position, part-time or not. I just wanted to be clear about it.
Okay. Well, it's going back to ordinance, and it'll be revisited.
Will those answers be there when we go back to ordinance? That's the question also.
Mr. O'Brien?
Actually, there is a job description, and I happen to see it over at the table here, so, when you get a chance.
In here?
Right.
But there is a job. Sent out to me and read to me, that was sent to me, that wasn't sent to me. This was. So, when I read this, it was vague.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the minutes with the job description, salary range, were in the pony, which were delivered to all of us.
I don't have it here. But thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Khan.
There was mention of the minutes were sent to us. Were they sent to us by email or were they left here for us to pick it up just prior to this reading?
They were in the pony? Yeah, the minutes were in the pony. Yep.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other further discussion, we'll, I'm looking for an agreement to send this to ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten zero. Next item, Building Needs Committee. I'm looking for a motion to approve this. Mr. Poissons?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve... Mr. Town Attorney, can we do all these together, all three of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, make a motion to approve 4.2.2, which was the Building Needs met on February 22nd, 2018, and referred to following items to the town council with favorable recommendations.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Tiki?
Mr. Chairman, again, Mr. Alan Llewellyn, the chairman of the Stratford High Subcommittee is here.
Mr. Llewellyn, can you come forward to the podium and discuss these items?
No problem, Mr. Chairman. Again, Alan Llewellyn, 949 Huntington Road, chairman of the Stratford High School Renovation Subcommittee. Thanks again for having me here to entertain these issues, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Llewellyn? Mr. Khan, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. Alan, it's my brilliant question. Are these ones coming out of our contingency or are they part of the standard work orders?
No, the, item number one and number two, under 4.2.2, are coming out of the contingency, and the sonatrol contract is within the, within the GMP, but is not a contingency application.
Thank you. Is there any other questions for Mr. Llewellyn? If not, there's no further discussion, we'll call this to a vote. All in favor, vote aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero. Now we have the town attorney's report.
You skipped something.
I'm sorry. I'm back up to Planning Commission, okay. Is there a motion for 4.2.3?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table 4.2.3.
There's a motion on table for Mr. Poissons at table. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Harden, second. Is there any discussion before we vote?
Discussion on table.
Okay. All in favor of tableing this, vote aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero. Okay, now we're to town attorneys.
9-0.
Oh, you, I'm sorry, Mr. Khan voted, no, so it's 9-1. Motion passes 9-1 with Mr. Khan voting nay vote. Now the town attorney's report.
Everything is well in Stratford.
Very well.
Thank you, thank you, attorneys. Okay, now, questions to the mayor. Is there any questions to our mayor?
No questions. I just wanted to speak with the mayor, and it was good to see you at the, at the black history book reading. And it was really good, because Ty Sims started that program 15 years ago, and the library jumped in, and it was a very, very good turnout, and having you there was very good. I enjoyed seeing you there and discussions we had. Thank you so much for coming by.
If no questions to the mayor, we'll move on to, I'm sorry. Dave, I'm sorry.
This is kind of funny to me. I was going to ask the mayor, how have you done so many great things in this town and since the time you've been in office? You've done a great job, and so I appreciate all that you have done so far. It's a different life already. Thank you.
Any other questions of mayor, comments? If not, we'll go down to ordinances, resolutions.
Yeah, item number six.
Item number six.
You should just note that absent any motion, those items will all remain, anything would remain on the table, so then move on to seven. Just note that.
Okay. All items that are on the table remain on table, we're moving to item seven. Ordnance and resolutions, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7.1 ordinance regarding applicability, excuse me, let me restate, a motion to send item 7.1 ordinance regarding applicability of traffic laws to the operation of bicycles to ordinance a public safety committee.
So, there's a motion to send this to both public safety and ordinance?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. O'Brien. Is there any discussion on this? Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes?
Good question. Has there been flagrant violations for bike riders that just need to come out again? Coming back, it's already been on the books for a while. Is there a reason why it's coming back up?
Mr. Kadim, it hasn't been on the books for a while. It surfaced during the last council, and then it died before it reached the committee. Now, we understand from Chief McNeil that there's been a problem since the, even though it was supposed to snow tomorrow, we did have some warmer days, and when those warmer days hit, it was a little bit of a problem. So, the police would like to see this ordinance or some form of it enacted, so that's why it resurfaced now.
I'm okay with that, in terms of the police needing to have more control, but I'm saying most young children don't really know the rules of driving, like you and I with the hands left, right, and so forth, and I read through it, and I don't, I don't know if there's going to be any leniency there for the children or how it's going to be enforced. That was my concern. Not so much that you have it, but it's the concern of how it affects children who just ride their bikes and go places in the summer and enjoy themselves.
And that's what you can discuss during the ordinance committee. That's, you know, where you can vet all of your concerns at that point in time.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other further questions, Mr. O'Brien?
I just wanted to mention that at Parks and Rec meeting was brought to our attention about a program called Ride Out that's been used in cities in, like Philadelphia and New York. So, the person that told us about this, one of our members, I hooked up with Stratford Pal, and they're going to research including that as part of any program we do. So, it's a way where they will close down a main portion of a street, and the kids can go out, ride their bikes, and it'd be nice to do something positive in conjunction with this, and it'd be a good way to offer training to the kids, too.
Thank you.
Any other further questions? If not, we'll call to a vote. All in favor sending this to ordinance?
Be ordinance and public safety, Mr. Chair.
Ordnance and public safety, correct.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten zero. Chair votes for, with sending it over positive. Okay, ordinance regarding prohibition of blocking the box. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to send item 7.2 ordinance regarding prohibition on blocking the box to the ordinance committee.
Is there a second? Save, Mr. Harden. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? If not, we'll call to a vote. All in favor of sending this to ordinance and to public safety? Vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten zero. We're on to 7.3. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept 7.3, sponsored by the town council, as an ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the town of Stratford for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019, and appropriating the sum of $220,872,095 in accordance therewith, 18-06. Whereas, the mayor has prepared and submitted to the town council the annual operating budget for the town of Stratford for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019, in accordance with the town's charter. Whereas, the town council has given consideration thereto and has conducted public hearings in connection therewith, and whereas the estimated amount of current expenses, permanent improvements, and other lawful charges of the Stratford Town Council of the town of Stratford for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019, is $220,872,095. Now therefore, be it hereby ordered by the town council of the town of Stratford that the budget attached hereto and made a part hereof be and is hereby proposed as the operating budget for the town of Stratford for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019, and that the sum of $220,872,095 is hereby appropriated for current expenses, permanent improvements, and other lawful charges for each department and each division thereof of the town of Stratford for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019, all in accordance with the provisions of the budget attached hereto and made part hereof. Resolve that the first reading of the above entitled ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with the copies thereof and have been previously furnished to each member of the town council, and that the same be adopted as a first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Okay, there's a motion on floor. Is there a second? Second by Mr. O'Brien. Is there any discussion before we send this to ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, actually, what you're doing is, this is an amendment, but to insert the dollar amount into this item.
Okay.
Amendment is voted on, then you will vote a second time as amended to send it to ordinance instead of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Town Attorney. So, this is an amendment to modify the current ordinance, and are there any discussions? If not, we'll vote to add these numbers in, 220, 800, $220,872,095. Is there any discussion? None? Call the motion to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten zero. Now, can I get a vote, can I get a motion to send this to ordinance?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to send to ordinance. Item 7.3 as amended. In dispense with the first reading.
In dispense of first reading. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Tiki. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten zero. Is there a motion for 7.4, an ordinance levying a tax rate?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to amend item 7.4, an ordinance levying a tax rate, Section 18-07, Section A of 39.90 mills on the dollar of the grand list of taxable property in the town of Stratford, Connecticut, on the first day of October, Section B of 39.9, excuse me, 90 mills on the dollar of the grand list of taxable motor vehicle property in the town of Stratford, Connecticut, on the first day of October. Whereas, the mayor has prepared and submitted to the town council the annual operating budget for the town of Stratford for the first, for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019, according to law, and whereas the town council has given consideration thereto and has conducted public hearings in connection therewith, and whereas the estimated revenues of the town of Stratford, other than by taxation for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019, are $41,522,731. And whereas, the town council has proposed an operating budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019, and whereas a tax levy at the rate of 39.90 mills on the dollar on the grand list of taxable property, excluding motor vehicle property, in the town of Stratford on October 1, 2017, is necessary to meet the appropriations less the estimated amount of revenue from other sources as permitted by law to be raised, whereas a tax levy on the rate of 39.90 mills on the dollar of the grand list of taxable motor vehicle property in the town of Stratford on October 1, 2017, is necessary to meet the appropriations less the estimated amount of revenue from other sources as permitted by law to be raised. And now therefore be it hereby ordered by the town council of the town of Stratford that a tax rate of 39.90 mills on the dollar on the grand list be and is hereby levied against all taxable property, excluding motor vehicle, in the town of Stratford on the grand list of October 1, 2017, and that a tax rate of 39.90 mills on the dollar value, on the dollar of the motor vehicle grand list be and is hereby levied against all taxable motor vehicle property in the town of Stratford on the motor vehicle grand list on October 1, 2017, that said taxes shall be due and payable in two installments, one half thereof on July 1, 2018, and the second half thereof on January 1, 2019, provided, however, that any tax, the aggregate amount of which shall not exceed $100, shall be due and payable in one payment on July 1, 2018, and be it resolved that the first reading of the above entitled ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with, as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each member of the town council, and that the same be adopted as a first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mrs. Dantow. So, is there any discussion on the amendment here that adds the mill rate? Any discussion? If not, let's call to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten zero. Now, I'm entertaining a motion to send this to ordinance.
I'd like to make a motion to send item 7.4 as amended to ordinance.
And to dispense with the first reading.
As dispensed with, excuse me. Thank you.
Is there a second? Mr. O'Brien, second. Is there any discussion before we send this to ordinance? Any discussion? If not, call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes ten zero. Chair votes with it. I'm looking for a motion to table 7.5.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to table item 7.5, resolution regarding the salary for the position of community and economic development coordinator.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Mr. Harden, a second. Is there any discussion before we vote? No discussion on tables, second time I'll get this right yet. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes ten zero. Okay, on the resolution to modify council resolution of September 11, 2017, right away, Mr. Hudson, is there someone here from the?
There he is.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Sean Plum from Bruce Jackson's office, so for this item, on May 26, 2015, the Planning Commission issued its eight twenty-four review approving the sale of a portion of the right-of-way along Tavern Rock Road. Oh, sure, of course. And then the question of whether to sell a portion of the right-of-way was presented to the council on June 8, 2015, and was approved. Last year, on September 11, 2017, the council resolved to sell the property at the corner of Tavern Rock Road to Mr. Dugas, but later on, a conversation with the town engineer, John Casey, we learned that you cannot actually sell a right-of-way, it has to be abandoned first, and then that piece of property can be sold, so we are recommending that you modify the September 11, 2017 approval to reflect the abandonment of the right-of-way and not the sale of the property.
Mr. Chair, question for Attorney Plum?
Yes, sir.
So, thank you, so the request would not change the value of the sale?
The sale will be the same in every respect.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, how come this wasn't done properly the first time?
That I don't have an answer for you, I can't answer that question.
Any other question? Okay, if, actually, I don't believe we actually made a resolution for this, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So, I'm looking for a motion to approve this. Is there a motion on the floor? Our Mrs. Dancho made a motion to approve this, is there a second? Second from Mr. Harden. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just so I'm clear, too, for discussion purposes, so we're approving to move forward with the sale.
You're modifying?
We're modifying to reflect what Attorney Plum stated.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes ten zero, Chair votes for, okay, next thing, resolution to amend the Strafford Town Council Rules of Procedure. Is there a motion for the fourth order of business?
Yes, I make a motion. I make a motion to approve the resolution to amend the Strafford Town Council Rules of Procedure, and Mr. Attorney, do you need to read all these, or is?
No, your motion could be simply that you move the sections Roman numeral four and Roman numeral five of the Strafford Town Council Rules of Procedure be amended as set forth in the agenda.
What he said.
What he said.
Your motion should be?
Is there a second to what he said?
I'll second it.
Mrs. Dancho, seconded, okay. Is there any discussion before we vote? Mr. Ken, I knew you were going to ask something, I just looked right at you, go ahead.
Through the Chair, I'd like to ask the Town Attorney's a question about FOI notification in regards to a regularly scheduled meeting. What I'd like to do tonight is amend this motion so that it includes posting it on the town's electronic calendar by the same Thursday that item five says it would notify the attorneys, the council members, et cetera. If we were to make, if I was to offer an amendment to have it posted that same Thursday, so that, for example, the public could have access to it roughly the same time as the council members and the attorneys, would that be consistent with FOI guidelines?
If your question is, your amendment, would that be consistent with FOI guidelines? Yes, it would, you could make such an amendment tonight.
Thank you, sir. During discussion, is it the right time to offer an amendment?
Yes, yes, once the item has been moved and seconded during discussion, you can make an amendment of the item, that is correct. So now is the time if you want to do something.
I'd like to offer an amendment to paragraph B under section five, where it reads, "The council clerk shall distribute copies to the agenda to each council member, the mayor, CAO, the town attorney, the assistant town attorneys. Further," this is the amendment, "I would insert, "A copy will be posted on the town's electronic calendar as the Town Council's meeting agenda, and then on or before the Wednesday proceeding, the date of the regular council meeting." Thank you, sorry. So the insert would be after the assistant town attorneys, that a copy will be posted on town's electronic calendar as the Town Council's meeting agenda, on or before the Thursday proceeding.
Is there any further discussion on Mr. Can's motion?
Mr. Chairman, there needs to be a second before you can dis-
Second.
Second by Mr. Kadim. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to weigh in here, if nobody does, I understand what you're trying to do, Mr. Can, but after going through this procedure, it's, I'm a little bit hesitant to support something that's going to lock us in, in writing, so down the road, it puts pressure that we're trying to get through the transition period here, and I don't really see anything of value in it because we're required by state law, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorneys, that by state law it has to be out by Friday, so if we go one day earlier, we're putting pressure, and as soon as it doesn't happen, there's gonna be a complaint, so I will be voting against it, if there's any other questions.
Mr. Chair, question through the Chair for the Attorneys, so what the Chairman kind of just said, so state law, it gets to the public by Friday afternoon, what is that time, twelve PM?
Correct.
Okay.
I had a question for the Attorney.
Thank you.
Does the amendment have to be, should be, do you recommend that the amendment be modified to say Friday instead of Thursday for the electronic part, so that it covers the town, so we don't have a problem with the state?
I don't think you need, if you're asking, no, 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 I would just leave it the way it is, if that's your concern, just make, vote no to the amendment if that's your concern.
Because, yes.
Leave it as is, and then the state law would apply.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Yes, Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the proponent of the amendment, is your intent to have the electronic agenda on the website by Thursday evening?
Yes.
Question to the clerk, through you, Mr. Chair. When you're distributing the agendas through the pony, is it always done by four thirty, and is it in a timely manner that our IT department could put it on the website? So, Mr. Chair, if I may, that's only my concern, Councilman Can, is that there are times where we will not be able to comply with the intent, which is laudable, but physically we can't, may not be able to do it, so that's why I would ask for some leniency and have it published on Friday electronically.
Through the Chair?
Yes, Mr. Kadim.
I think that makes a lot of sense, rather than Can, how you feel about that?
Well, I'd go back to paragraph A that says the agenda will be completed by Wednesday at four thirty, completed Wednesday at four thirty, distributed Thursday, so you'd have a completed agenda by Wednesday, as amended here, which gives you all day Thursday to either distribute it to the members listed, and to have IT, they have the entire day of Thursday to post it.
Mr. Florak?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, A does not say that, what happens is that all new business is presented to the clerk by Wednesday, so that the clerk can then compile the agenda, that normally does not get completed by four thirty on Wednesday, so.
Thank you for that clarification.
Is there any more discussion on this? Okay, we're gonna call to a vote, all in favor of-
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, you're voting on Mr. Can's amendment?
Right, yeah, we're voting on Mr. Can's amendment.
Before we vote, I'll ask to withdraw the amendment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Can. So Mr. Can has withdrawn his amendment, so now we're gonna go back to the original I can't remember, who did the original motion? Bill, okay, Bill, do we second it, okay, so now, now let's do discussion on this, all in favor, I mean, any discussion on the motion forward? Sorry, guys. Any discussion on any of these? If not, I'm gonna call to a vote. All in favor of the motion that Mr. O'Brien put forward, and the Town Attorney so eloquently described to us, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten zero, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would just suggest now that before you go on to item eight, you take up the two items you added to the agenda, seven point eight and seven point nine, specifically a motion regarding the capital improvement program.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Pia?
Yes, Mr. Chair, as previously stated, I'd like to make a motion to send item seven point eight, an ordinance appropriating fourteen million seven hundred ninety-seven thousand two hundred dollars for various public improvements in the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2018 to 2019, resolve that the first reading of the above entitled ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with, as copies therefore have been previously furnished to each member of the council, and the same be adopted as the first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tiki. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call this to vote, send this to ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero. Now we're gonna go to new business.
Mr. Chairman, you needed item seven point nine, I believe, the second item you added to the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, because you have the only copy, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to send seven point nine, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of fourteen million seven hundred ninety-seven thousand two hundred dollars bonds of the town to meet the appropriation for various public improvements in the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2018, 2019, pending issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, be resolved that the first reading of the above entitled ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with, as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each member of the Town Council, and that the same be adopted as a reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Is there a second from Mr. Harden? Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, sending this to ordinance?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes ten zero. Now we're on to new business, beautification, Mr. Kadim?
Be resolved that Sylvia Martin of Strafford be and hereby appointed a member of beautification committee for the term concurrent with the council term. That's A, do you want me to read both?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. Be resolved that Gil, how she say it, Licio?
Licio.
I'm saying this correctly, I don't wanna beat it up, Gil Licio of Strafford be and hereby appointed as a member of beautification for the term concurrent with council term.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Harden. Is there any discussion on appointing Mrs. Martin and Mrs. Licio to the beautification?
Not really a discussion, it's just I'm happy to see that, you know, they were able to be put back on there, I really appreciate you guys thinking about it, thank you.
Any other comments, if not, we'll call to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes ten zero, Chair votes. Disability Review Board, is there a motion to take these three people and renominate them?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion on eight point one, point two, be it resolved that Janice Passmarcone, Renee C. Ricard Casey, MD, and Frank Skiffow, MD, be appointed a member of the Disability Review Board for a term that expires January 13, 2020.
Second by Mr. Harden. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call to a vote, all in favor of these three people being reappointed, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes ten zero. Next on eight point one, point three, Commission on Aging, Mr. Perillo?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Dale McClan and Jolene Gemza from Strafford, appoint a member of the Commission of Aging, a term expiring November 30, 2019, and Gus Sukha and George Henges for a term expiring December 31, 2019.
There's a motion on table, Mr. Harden is seconding it, is there any discussion? If not, we'll call to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes ten zero, and now is there a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
So moved by Mr. Harden, seconded by Mr. Can, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minion is adjourned.